And we're going to start by asking Commissioner Pickens if he will give our invocation, followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Wilkinson. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, let us thank you for this glorious day and all the blessings in it, Father God. We just thank you for the opportunity to be able to gather here, Father God, as commissioners and staff and citizens, Father God, and let's discuss and deliberate the issues at hand, Father God, and make the best decisions for the citizens of Putnam County. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Wilkinson. We're going to open the floor for public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed, you know, I'm not even going to read that because usually in workshop, we just let the people talk during the case that we were discussing. So instead of doing a public comment for agenda items, if you'll, if you'd like, we'll just let you discuss whatever course you want to. It would be best if you turned in a blue card if you want to speak that said what agenda item you want to speak about, and then I'll make sure and call on you during that agenda item. With that, I'm going to recess the workshop and open the Port Authority workshop. And first on the list is any public comment on Port Authority items. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment on Port Authority and open general discussion by the commissioner on Port Authority items. Is there any general discussion today on Port? Okay, we'll close that, and we'll adjourn the Port Authority meeting. That was a big long one. And we'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioners workshop, and we'll go to the item A, the administrative fee schedule.
Thank you, Chairman. This is just an amendment of one line in the fee schedule. You approve it every year as part of the budget process, but Medicare, Medicaid has come out with an amendment to the mileage allowance for what can be claimed under the Medicaid rates. So as you will see, the only thing that we're asking to amend at the January meeting would be the mileage rate to take it in line with what they're reimbursing.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it unanimously. Okay, and we'll go to option B, which is the Florida Home Parks MSBU. Didn't we already have MSBU or is this?
MOU.
O U.
Yes, sir. We did talk about it at workshop for another entity, so same premises happening. This group would like an MOU with the county that just enters into a partnership that they help care for their premises.
Did Parks and Rec support this?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, it came before the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Mary Lynn has been on that board for a number of years. She's not now, and her group has worked tirelessly over there. So yeah, we unanimously recommend it.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second. And second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Parks and Rec, Melrose Youth Sports Funding Request. I'm assuming this is the one we've been talking about two or three months now that went to Parks and Rec and was approved from Parks and Rec and is recommended by the staff and for the two fields that we own and...
Correct, sir. Staff is recommending support of the project. The Parks and Recreation Board has recommended support of the project. This would allow them to have the two fields that are currently not lit, and they're not able to utilize past dusk, obviously for safety reasons, and they do have a great program going out there, and staff is recommending support of the project.
Well, I do support this, but I want to state one thing for anybody that happens to be watching and look back at this. This is another classic example of where the citizen puts in their time, money, and effort to make their facility better, just like Francis Facility, just like the Triangle Park does some, and I'm telling you right now, this, I'm on board with anybody that's willing to put skin in the game with us, and they have. There's a whole list and a packet of things that they have done over the years out at Melrose. So I am going to support this wholeheartedly, and the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any additional discussion?
I have a question. Yes, sir. Unless I missed it, what is the source of funds for this?
It'll be general fund reserves. General fund reserves.
No, I agree with you, Commissioner Turner, about the partnership that we have, and I greatly appreciate what they've done.
Commissioner Pickens, did you have something to add?
Yes, I just wanted to add that Julianne and Administrator Suggs and myself, and Kevin, we went, we took a trip out there and met with, is it CW? Is that correct? Okay, and some of his members there, and they have worked for a long time to keep those fields up. They are definitely limited in the hours that they can practice, especially now. You know, baseball is almost year-round, so they have fall ball, and they have a number of teams, and just to put their success aside, just their efforts to keep those kids wanting to come back to Melrose and the quality of ball that they're playing, and I think it's just, it would be a shame if we didn't support this. They do have one lighted field now, and then two that are not, so this would take care of the two. And so that would, it's going to really help them move this program further along, especially with their practices and being able to attract maybe tournaments and things like that. So I appreciate the support. And the Parks and Rec Advisory Board heard them twice. The first ask was a little different. They came back and got some different numbers and came back to us again, and we discussed it, and 100% agree to do this forward. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to go to item D, which is the General Services. And as my best guess at what happened here is they went in and they started to remodel on all the air conditioning around here that we goaded on a couple of months ago, and they left out a part that they thought would be compatible with the new control systems, and it wasn't compatible. And so in order for the heat strips to work in the two units, they're going to need additional funds to replace that particular part that they thought was going to, was going to be compatible, and it wasn't. And so that's what the money's for. I don't see where we have a choice unless we want to turn the whole thing off. We've already got it moving right in the middle of the project.
Yeah, and I sort of like that heat control system.
Thank you. Where it can get nice and cool up here. Pardon me? It's true. We can put on plenty of jackets if it gets real cold over there. But the problem is it's for over there, too.
Right.
Not just in here. So anyhow, chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion.
I need to amend the recommended motion to go ahead and allow staff to move forward with that today rather than coming back through consent.
I thought we did. Is that your motion?
That was it.
To go ahead and move forward? Yeah, we knew time was of the essence. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to go down to commission requests, and I'm going to start. I've had a gentleman reach out to me concerning canal dredging, and I told him that I absolutely was not on board with using the county funds because I don't even think the canal belongs to the county in the first place. I don't think the county owns any of the canals in Putnam County that I'm aware of, especially this. So he's going to attend the legislative session with Representative Payne and Senator Hudson in January, and he asked me, would I give him a letter that would, that would support his ask? And I told him that I would bring it to the board and discuss it. But I'm telling you right now, number one, I don't think there's any way that we can do it on a county level because we don't own it. And we can't, everyone here is aware that we can't work on private property. So if he was successful with, from the state and federal in getting the funds, I don't see how we could do it because they wouldn't give the funds to him. They'd give it to us, and then it would be another prop, another project for us to take on. And not only that, there must be at least 50 canals in Putnam County that the county doesn't own. The next thing you know, we'd be looking for legislative funding to all 50 canals.
Exactly.
And like I said, it's not that I don't wish him, wish him, I tried to go the MSBU route and said, well, let's do an MS, try an MSBU. And if all the people on the canal will put in the money, then maybe we could do it like a road MSBU. But I was advised by council, he knows no way to get there on a canal dredging MSBU. So, you know, I don't know that there's anything we can do here and the, but I told him I'd bring it to the board and talk to the board. I just don't know if there's an answer, you know, there's certainly not a simple answer to this. But do we want to open this box?
If I may. My experience of that, working with Representative Payne's office, because we certainly had phone calls about this before.
And this guy here, and we've talked to multiple times, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if it's this gentleman or what. And so my experience is that they're all different. And some of them were part of a plat when the, when the, when the division subdivision was platted, and you just have to do title work on it. You have to go back and see who actually owns it. And the few times that we did reach out to the state, they said they, we'd have to show them title work as to who owned it and that. So that's a big thing, is who actually owns it, just like what you said. And I don't know that the county should get involved in it because if it was owned by the state, and the state had some kind of rights to it, then they would handle it directly. It wouldn't come through the, it wouldn't come through the county as far as funds. They wouldn't issue funds to us and ask us to dredge it on their behalf. So I think that he needs to sit down with the state representative and Senator's office first, and can certainly do that before the delegation meeting if they want. But they need to do some research as to who actually owns it, and if it's the person who built the subdivision, it could be partially owned by all the owners of the subdivision. It just depends.
A lot of few of them actually, the meets and boundaries grid and the lot go right down the center, close to the center of the canal, to the owners on both sides up into it. And there's a few of them that are owned by other gift lanes, state's gift lanes, but for those, the county had no right to do them. And they, and I don't know how much work the county, what the state actually does on them. I know the Corps of Engineers, the Corps of Engineers is federal, aren't they? You know, so, so the Corps of Engineers being federal, they, they don't look at them either. They basically at the mouth of every one of them just claim that that's where our jurisdiction ends, even, even the one that's, the first one on the left, the second one on the left going into Dunn's Creek, which goes up to that DOT property that I'm trying to secure from possible boat ramp, that that particular canal is actually owned by the same people that own the bottom of the land in Dunn's Creek. It's titled the same way. So it's not, but it's still not a county-owned canal. It's a state tip run canal or whatever, whatever is in the name that actual Dunn's Creek is. But that's an unusual one from the ones that I've looked at previously. It's usually out to the, into the canal. The lot on is actually owned out into the canal, so we don't own any of those, so.
Right, but then, of course, there's the fact that they could access, anybody can access it because it's, you know, it's in the groundwater. So again, I think that gets referred back to the state, and then they can have somebody from one of those agencies talk to them. But they're going to ask who owns it, and then the state will know if they have ownership. Only, the only way I see a county owning any canal is if we own on both sides, all the way down on either side of the canal.
Even though, even then, I don't think we do unless it's actually in the county's name. And I haven't seen one yet that's in the county's name. They usually are turned over to whatever, whoever owns the water they enjoy, like the river and Dunn's Creek and whatever's owned by the state.
That's my experience.
That's kind of what I saw when I looked some of them up. So I, I certainly, I told him straight up that I wasn't for doing any of this because if it was a lot of county-owned canal, like I said, we kind of came up with the MSBU thing, and I talked to Rich about it several months ago, and he just didn't know the way for us to get there, that he didn't know if we could set it up for a canal dredging. And they're going to run into the same situation that we run into on, there's a handful of people in there that want it dredged because it's not one of the worst ones, you know, in the area. There's a handful of people that say it's just fine if the taxes are going to go up $500 a year. You know, they, they think it's fine just like it is. So, but I did tell him I'd bring it to the board, and there's the discussion.
Yeah, I think our only avenue is to ask him to sit with the state representative's office.
He's on the legislative agenda.
Okay.
Talked, Sean Daley talked to, what's her name, Travis Hudson's Legislative aide.
Okay.
And he is on the agenda for the upcoming legislative session to request the legislative money. But I just, like I said, I just don't see how I could give him a letter of support unless that letter of support was worded in such a way that, I wish you the best, but the county cannot take on any obligations whatsoever, you know, to do this project if you're successful in it.
Right.
Then I don't mind writing him a letter, you know, saying, Julianne, can you, can you come up with me a letter that says something along those lines that, that I don't mind giving him a letter of support, but the county, the county's not supporting it that I am or something like that, and, and that the county can't take over the project unless it turns out to be county property, and I'm almost certain it's not. So if you could come up with me a letter for that, I'll give that to him. It's part of his request, but we can't help him as far as the county.
And just very historical knowledge, we've not, everybody got a county, you know?
A lot of them have been able to follow.
Okay. That was a drainage district.
A drainage district.
Yes, yes.
Let's turn back to the county.
Yeah, that was, is that what you were going to say?
Elton Grove, that one?
Well, that was also part of the mitigation thing. And it was also from Cedar Creek to the river, the bridge, the new bridge to the river. We, we did use some of the mitigation, East Platten mitigation funds, including some of all the deadfall that came in there from the storms.
Oh, yeah, but that was still appropriated by the state, right?
That's correct.
Right, yeah, that was appropriated by the state.
Yes, that, yes, that was state mitigation grant, the East Platten Basin mitigation grant.
But that wasn't really a canal. That was the actual creek itself.
The creek itself needed to be, that's correct.
So that's a whole, to me, that's a whole.
Right. Oh, it is. And this was not recreating any flooding issues that I'm aware of, so we couldn't include it in a mitigation, flooding mitigation grant. I don't even think any of this area flooded during the last storm that it was there. If it did, it wasn't as serious as the other parts that came through and down. This is the last canal that you get to going east on Harlan, I guess, with that canal name. And like I said, there's a bunch of canals. So if you do that letter, Julianne, I'll give him that. We'll, if we have anything else on that one, we'll move on. And the next commission request, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have something that I want to bring up. We've talked about it many times, but this morning, as you well know, we passed, finally got Barden Ranchette Road done, and the contract is going to be starting out there in the next week or 10 days, from my understanding. This board has talked about Oak Tree Lane up in the Francis area, and Mr. Troxel went out there along with Robert Freeman. And so we just want to talk to you about that today. Mr. Nimitz, I've asked him to be prepared. JR and Julianne are fully prepared about this. We've been going over it for a few weeks, but it might be an opportunity now since the contractor's going to go all the way out to Barden. This isn't that far to get this road done if we can, can make this happen. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Nimitz.
Can I ask a question first? So in Lehman terms, you're asking us to give you more, more paving than you're getting already in your last, in your last request?
It's not in my district, but it's a...
You sure you're not a Democrat?
No, sir. It's, well, you saved money this morning. You saved $28,000, so. But, but it's something that we talked about trying to piggyback at the same time. Mr. Nimitz, you have the floor.
Thank you. As Commissioner Harvey indicated, there were past discussions by the previous Public Works Director about using leftover funds from Barden Ranchette Road to overlay Oak Tree Lane with asphalt. Oak Tree Lane has millings that are about three years old, and it's a good candidate for asphalt overlay. We estimate the asphalt overlay cost to be below the threshold required to advertise. So with that, we would like to get three quotes while we have multiple contractors working throughout the county to overlay this with asphalt. The advantage of that is that if we do this, there's a potential that we may not incur any mobilization costs. So there's 28,000 ARPA funds left over from Barden Ranchette Road that was awarded this morning, and there's 62,000 left in the resurfacing budget. So with all that being said, Public Works would like authorization from the board to get those three quotes and utilize the funding reference to overlay this road.
So we have to have three quotes for procurement, even though we could just give them the original contract or a change order? Or we just need to make?
You do. This is not a valid change order opportunity, and staff does not recommend using partial ARPA dollars. So understand that this is the first I'm hearing funding sources, but I do not recommend mixing ARPA dollars with our resurfacing dollars if you've got it in resurface.
Can we just find out how much? Do we have any idea what's this going to cost, like a ballpark?
Yes, there's somewhere between 40,000 to 60,000, right around there.
Well, how about the board, if it's all out of youth commissioners? The board authorized you to move forward and try to find it out, unless just fund it all out of ARPA. I mean, we already got 28,000 in ARPA, so that'd just be 32,000 or thereabouts.
Out of the resurfacing, which we have 60,000 unencumbered.
Yeah, but we, we may also need that somewhere else, because there's a bunch of resurfacing we may need to give change orders on that hasn't happened yet, which we're going to talk about in a minute. So the first part of it was already funded out of ARPA. This commissioner has no problem funding this out of ARPA, as long as it's all out of ARPA, correct? Okay. Let, can we, can we go ahead and give him the authority to get quotes and let's see what it's going to cost?
Okay, so when, when Bard Ranchette was originally milled or paved or whatever, it never got, and I'm sorry to...
It was a double chip sealed road.
Okay.
Which, that, we don't do that anymore.
Okay, and it never got sealed? Because I remember the number of times you asked, what was the status of that, and we always said, yes.
And then what happened, the bridge blew out, so we couldn't get equipment across the bridge to fix the roads. We made a promise to Barden.
Yes.
That as soon as the bridge got fixed, we would get out there and get that done. So this is, we passed that this morning.
So Mike, so in that new proposal, we won't have that issue again?
Correct.
It's, it's a completed, sealed, everything's...
We're not doing double chip sealed roads anymore.
So what is it called?
This is an asphalt.
Okay, so do you pave them, do you pull up what's there or?
It'll be milled a little bit, correct, from my understanding?
No, the double chip seal, no.
No, not.
What's existing there, does it get picked up?
Are you talking about Oak Tree Lane, Oak Tree Lane?
No, Bard Ranchette.
Bard Ranchette will be milled down and then resurfaced.
That's my question.
The chip seal shouldn't be.
So what, how does it, tell me how it works. So right now, there's obviously chip there that never got sealed.
Well, there's, essentially, you have the stabilization of the road bed.
I don't think she's understanding.
I'm not.
This backup. It's called a double chip seal. They put down a layer of gravel. They put down some liquid asphalt, and then they put down another layer of gravel and some liquid asphalt and to get double, double chip sealed.
Okay.
And then, but it's never been paved with asphalt.
Right.
And so that's what they're talking about doing now is actually paving over the double chip seal, which you give them the opportunity, because the base should be fine, they should give them the opportunity to go right over top of it without milling anything that's there now on that particular part of it.
Okay, that was, thank you.
Chip seal has a lifespan of about eight years, whether or not you...
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
It's not a problem. So do you want a motion or just a wave from the board that's okay with him? Because we're not telling him he can do anything other than get pricing. Is that okay? Everybody just waves and supports?
Well, there is one thing to note. We do have a contract.
But, well, the problem is, it might be, we might be saving mobilization if we can go ahead and move this forward.
But Julianne said we couldn't do it like that. We couldn't make this procurement. We couldn't make this unless they happen to be the low person, and it would be an additional contract, then they might could do it at the same time. Is that what you're saying about the mobilization?
We have, we have multiple contractors working in the county right now. We'd like to get quotes from, you know, at least three of them.
Right.
Whoever's lowest would like to direct them to proceed while they're still working in the county. They may take their equipment and be out of here, you know, whenever, you know, from now and the next time this board meets. So if this drags out that long, we may miss that opportunity and have to pay remobilization to come back here.
Well, I'm not willing to give you just part blocks to go pave the road without any knowing, even, even knowing what it, how much it's going to cost or anything. That's an unfair request. But I'm willing to go forward if it remains in the neighborhood. So how do we fix this, Julianne? Do we give him the authority up to a certain amount of money to go on and do it? Like if it stays within the requested amount and then allow the administrator another five or 10,000 on top of that to, in case it doesn't come in to make it go ahead, if it's going to save us money? If it's not going to save us money on mobilization, it can wait till January?
Well, we have two, two caveats that we need to talk through. One is procurement, and anything under $65,000 in total project dollars can be obtained via three quotes. So if it were under $65,000, it would be a three quote scenario with the administrator and the chairman's signature at their leisure, at their pleasure. If it's over 65, from a procurement standpoint, we would have to stop until we were able to come back to a consent agenda. That's caveat one. On the budget side of the House, determining the funding source is going to be pivotal for this conversation. We would have to validate where we are in the ARPA funds as far as general governmental services and make sure we're not tripping a threshold that we shouldn't be over. And then, two ARPA dollars were booked into a reserves for future projects, which can only be moved by board resolution. I do not have the authority nor the designation to move those dollars, so...
Let's approach it from this angle if we want to try to skin this case. Let's, what do you say? We go ahead and approve the, the 65,000 out of ARPA if it fits, when in your categories of what we can use it for. If not, we'll do the 62,000 in paving funds and then, and then let the administrator and the chairman sign it. And then if it turns out that we don't feel comfortable about it, then it comes back to us, we'll kill it until January, y'all can talk about it. Yep, that suit everybody?
That's fine. The caveat, just allowable, but caveat being that the budget resolution would follow the action if it comes out of ARPA, because it is in that future projects, which requires a board budget resolution to be on consent. So your budget resolution may actually trail your purchase.
What does a motion need to say? Okay, well, the way that 65,000 works, it doesn't mean that every project is under 65,000 that the chairman is just going to willy-nilly sign it. Other chairman, and myself included, are very careful with that authority. And if it's not something we feel very comfortable about, we don't sign that. It comes back to the board unless it's an emergency situation, or it's going to cost the county a bunch of money to wait, or there's got to be some caveats in there. And even then... then, this chairman would probably bring it back to the board anyhow, even though I did it. Um, just where everybody knew and was comfortable about it, and y'all could slap my hand and I wouldn't ever do it again if you didn't like it, so...
We're just hoping to save some mobilization.
I understand, so-
We can do that.
And I'm trying to move this forward today, and if we can, then what the motion-
I think you only need consensus at this time. Your policy allows for the chairman and the administrator to execute a purchase up to sixty-five, and you guys have already discussed your potential funding sources, and until we know for sure which direction we're going, it would come back to consent.
So, if this happened, that they could get this done within the meantime and before January, get it rolling? And it was under, under the sixty-five thousand, does the chairman doesn't have the authority to sign for ARPA funds, does he?
The chairman, what the chairman signs for is, is not designated in the procurement policy, so that, remember, there's two caveats. The chairman has the authority to sign for the purchase for, to execute the contract. As I stated, the chairman nor staff has the authority to move money from a reserves future project. So, irregardless of the funding source, when we determine appropriateness, we would have a budget resolution on that January tenth meeting, if in fact the chairman and the administrator have executed a contract.
So, basically, we're giving him the authority to go look, and if he can find something that Mr. Shugman, myself, deemed to be appropriate within the dollars we discussed here today, we can move forward and we'll figure out how to fund it in January, which is not ideal, but possible.
So, let's clarify, just for the public, we're not figuring out how to fund it, we're identifying the proper funding source and, and allocating those dollars to the proper expense line.
That's what I meant.
I knew you did.
So, okay, so does everybody have a wave of support here for this project?
Yeah, I'm good with it. I mean, I like the idea that we could save quite a bit of money by doing this, so that's okay.
So, if it turns out we can't, then we'll just turn it off to January and then can move forward under normal, absolutely normal procurement process.
Right. I like that idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, I can handle it. Uh, Mike, don't run off. JR, uh, and it may be too early to talk about this, and if it is, just please tell me that it's probably a little early to talk about this. On it's. Too early? I want to talk about it, but y'all have a plan. Talk to them or something. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Um, that's quite, uh...
It's a hard part of our business, it is.
Well, I understand completely, but we ran into it this morning, and so I knew they got a plan, but I mean, I just, the people that know me, and especially the people that sit here with me, know that I'm, just don't have a lot of, uh, patience when it comes to this kinda stuff, because in the real world, we don't have patience for this kinda stuff. When I say the real world, in the private world, government world, so anyhow, I'll let that go. Uh, we'll start, Commissioner, uh, requests or comments. Commissioner Pickens, do you have anything for us, sir?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Oh, great, I have all kinds of requests.
Lot of problems. We've got no five oh five, knock yourself out.
I would like to, so a couple of things, um, I'd like to discuss. The North Drainage District, that we received the funds from state appropriation, what is the status of that? I know that at one point I asked, and you said we're in the engineering phase, but I'm getting asked by constituents in that area, I mean, what is it, what are we trying to do here? What's the goal? What, what area are we affecting, that kinda thing?
So, I know that at the November meeting, we had the official funding agreement and we booked the dollars. Um, at this time, the project would be project-led out of Public Works, so, Mike, this would be the Bosswick Drainage, uh, Legislative Appropriation.
I think it was referred to as North Drainage District, but the area ended up Bosswick.
Yeah, would there be a possibility to give her the short version now?
Yes.
And let me get her, ask her a request if she would take time to go meet with you for the full version of the Public Works?
Yes.
I met with you fifteen times over the East Platte, that's what it takes, and so, uh, that's your district. You can just give her the quick update and then let her start meeting with you about that North Drainage District.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, right now, um, if I recall correctly, we're getting the funding agreement between us and DEP, which is a grant administrator finalized. And as soon as that's finalized, then we'll move forward with the design team and, and then forward with construction, if that's convenient.
Well, yeah, I'll sit up with Tom to sit down with you, 'cause I'd like to see what the particulars are. I know you, you're in design, I understand that, but like what the goal is, what area it is that's flooding and that kinda stuff, particular in the roads and, and the areas.
Yes, it's, it's extensive, so yes, I would prefer if you do, set aside some time, we'll sit down in our conference room and walk you through everything.
Okay.
For several years now, this commission has taken a little different approach to what previous commissions have, but we've actually asked or voted on commissioners to take a project and be involved more in the project than-
I like that.
-what has. Um, I would like to recommend that we do that with Commissioner Wilkinson, and that way she can be involved, she can be involved with what gets fixed, and she knows the area very well, so, I mean, so I just, I think this would be a very good time to actually get her involved in the project, like I am at the landfill, and like I am at the utilities and the, um, I, I think this would be a good time. Do I need to do that by motion or consensus? By consensus?
Now, I think that would be essential. It, it is your district, and Commissioner Rawls was heavily engaged with that one, so it would be great if you-
But he's not any longer, so would you please let Mr. Wilkinson take that over? Thank you.
All right, so my second, um, request is, I'd like an updated phone directory. It's a little thing, but what happens, as I can share with you as a new commissioner, I know we have the directory on the phone line, but you have to know the person's name and what department, and then we have the My Putnam intra-district web, where it's not being updated. So, what happens is when people come in, um, or we get phone calls, new staff, whether it's myself as a new commissioner or new staff coming in, if they get a phone call, we wanna be able to direct them to the right person. And so, I would really like to see a directory, whether it has to come from-
Could I have one too? I've been asking for it for five years.
Whether it comes from the VOCC, whether it comes from the VOCC or the countywide IT department, however it happens, I'd like to see that happen, so, it, you know, it's important for us, whenever people call, that we can get them to the right person.
No problem. We'll take care of it.
Totally agree. Maybe a spreadsheet or something.
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
I'd like one also.
All right.
Can I get one?
No, you can't.
You ran out.
They only had three.
Good, Mr. Wilkinson is the one that led this charge, we'll make sure she has one. I know there's, I know there's sources out there, but you would have to know to go to those sources.
No problem.
And so, that's, that's like-
Take care of it.
Yeah. And then my third thing, and this might be early on in my, um, might be a longer discussion and might not be the right time, but when we discussed, um, ambulances, and I know we changed the, uh, the billing rate, but what about our old ambulance bills that are on file that we've had for many years? Um, do we have a way to collect and go after those? Is that something I'd like to see us start to?
So, we start, we, we discussed during the budget process that that's gonna be a first-of-the-year workshop item, is that we're gonna bring you guys some options for, um, we don't currently do collections of aging accounts.
Okay.
Um, but we are gonna bring you all some options and get some board direction on how you'd like to move forward in that, and in that way.
Right, I just think that there's, uh, an ability there to recoup some of our expenses. I know we're not gonna get them all, but anything we could do to bring revenue in back into the county for people who receive these services, um...
A couple of years ago, sort of a big issue we get, getting the bills out, I think they've rectified most of that.
Take care of it.
And so, we didn't really know how much we even had owed to them.
Yeah.
Because they hadn't ever been billed, but that's been probably a couple of years at least, and so they have fixed that, I think, or mostly fixed that over the time with the new billing software and the, and the people that are working in that department.
Yeah, we're billing within seven to ten days, so-
We do our own billing, that's our third party.
No, ma'am, we do our own in-house billing.
Uh, so, we're gonna set this up in either January or February, and then, um, Commissioner Wilkinson, if you have any questions about that, would you get the JR, Julianne? Uh, because any input that you could give, I know you have a strong financial background also, any input that you could give.
Okay.
I know about chip seal, you know about this kinda stuff.
We used to, Mr. Chairman, we used to do our own billing. No, I mean, we used to third-party bill it out, but we found that that was-
That was a mess.
That was a mess, and it was, they weren't keeping up with it, so we brought it back in the house, but the collections is, is the problem, it's not the billing. And we've talked about even trying to, I won't make light of it, but, you know, if somebody does use our service, they, they should be given paid.
Right.
To a certain extent.
So, those are my three, well, sir. I've done it.
Oh, yeah. They call you on it, no problem.
Yeah, to go for the big one.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, especially seeing how one of them, you had to take over and start doing it yourself. So, all right, so, uh, I-
Yes, sir, I'm good.
Commissioner Harvey, would you like to bring this up on the board?
Sure, and I, I got one other thing. Um, you know, the other day, it was yesterday, I believe, the fire EMS was challenged by the Sheriff's Department, I'm ringing the bell.
Oh, yeah.
Um, just for clarification, sir, that was the other way around?
I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, well, so, uh, fire EMS challenge, the Sheriff's Department, we don't know who won, but the ringing of the bell for Salvation Army, there is a slot available on Monday the nineteenth, so I'm gonna take a time slot, so if any other commissioner wants to join me that day, Publix on Monday the nineteenth, or any elected official that would like to come out. You don't have to wear outfits like the Sheriff's Department did yesterday, but, uh-
Are you?
I doubt it. I don't think I will, no.
I don't know that I'm gonna come there.
Would it help if I did, you would come?
I would try to be there.
Yellow tie.
If you're gonna wear, if you're gonna wear an elf outfit or whatever it is you wear, then I would probably try to be there.
See, Sarah, I'm being painted into a corner, huh?
I bet Sarah would even show up and take your picture, and you'll tell her what time it is.
Okay, moving right along. On Tuesday, Snow Day is going to happen in Putnam County on Tuesday, December twenty-seventh, from three to seven PM at the Platte Riverfront. And, uh, all they're looking for is volunteers to come help at the Snow Day on Tuesday, December twenty-seventh. Right? Good. And that's open for us and anybody out there in the listening audience.
Where are you joined?
Where are you joined?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all, Mike. Yeah, I don't think I have anything further to add, um, so, Deputy County Administrator, either one of you have anything to add?
I just have one, um, item to remind the board of, that we have set the Putnam County Legislative Delegation Hearing, you briefly talked about it, it's January ninth. Um, staff is working to put together the county's legislative, uh, priorities, so